We're going to call the Board of Selectmen meeting for September 23, 2019, to order. This meeting is being recorded for later broadcast. Is anybody in the audience also recording it? Seeing none, can we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? First order of business is public comments. I don't see anybody. I don't see any sheets, so I'm assuming they're not here. We have a 7 o'clock public hearing request to name the town building at 21 Pheasant Court. Is anyone here to represent the Board of Directors?
Good evening. Scott Wright, on behalf of the Auburn Youth and Family Services Board of Directors.
Welcome. Can you briefly explain...
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to open the hearing.
Second. Anyone opposed? All those in favor, say aye. All right. Can we just briefly explain what you would like us...
Yes. We are asking for the town to name the building at 21 Pheasant Court, the Sally Doc Angelo Center for Auburn Youth and Family Services. Sally has been the executive director for the past 30 years. She's put in countless hours of her own time, of her own money, helping the residents of the town. We're looking for a way to honor her, and we felt this would be the best way, given everything that she's done for the town. We do have full support of the board of past directors. We've reached out to folks in the community. Unfortunately, there is an event for Sally this evening, so a lot of them had to attend that. And we also... We know this is an open meeting, but we are trying to keep it a little bit under wraps to unveil this at the annual meeting for Auburn Youth and Family Services in the first week of October. Hence, that we don't have a lot of other people here speaking in support of her. I can tell you that we do have unanimous support from everyone we've spoken to.
Do Board members have questions, comments, concerns? Mrs. Goodrich?
Thank you, Mr. Cappella. So, I just want to say that this request has my full support. I was a much younger mom of two young children, going through some difficulties with my husband with health issues, and had the opportunity to reach out to Auburn Youth and Family Services. And I'll tell you, you know, what they did for me 28 years ago. I try to repay back every single year. But if we didn't have an agency under the guidance of Sally Doc Angelo here in this town, I'm not sure where my family would have been at that time. So, I have great respect and admiration for Sally, and this has my full support.
I couldn't agree more. My mother would be doing piano lessons after teaching. Single mother making ends meet, and, you know, we certainly relied on them. And I was born and raised in this town, and that's what makes me want to give back and work with Auburn Youth, so I think it's fitting for Sally.
Does anybody else have anything? Seeing none, is anyone in the audience here who would like to speak on this item? Seeing none. We do have a letter of support from the Midstate Auto Group, from Raymond Butler, expressing its full support for this. The Butters have been notified, and I don't see any of them here. So, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Some of them.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is a vote. Is there any discussion? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to name the town building at 21 Pheasant Court the Sally Doc Angelo Center for Auburn Youth and Family Services Incorporated.
Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Aye. The Chair is against. Not because I don't think she's a wonderful person. I just don't feel that we should be naming buildings for anybody in particular at this time. But thank you for bringing it, and good luck. I don't know that this is a great surprise, and it's been on TV, but hopefully you can surprise her.
Absolutely.
Thank you for coming in. Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right. We have several people here, but is someone here for the Boy Scout troop? If you'd come forward, sir, and join us at the table, and just introduce yourself and explain. I know this is a fairly customary event, but it's always good to...
Good evening. My name's Lyle Cowett. I'm here representing Boy Scout Troop 101. We are holding our annual bottle and can drive in a couple weeks, on the 19th, I believe, from 9:00 to 12:00. So, we have applied for our open air permit, and we are hoping to see the town waive the fee for that for this year.
In our packet, we do have a completed application, and we have an email from the fire chief expressing no opposition. Do Board members have questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the license for the open air on town property for Boy Scout Troop 101. I'll second.
Does it include the date and the time?
Sure. So, to include the date of Saturday, October 19, 2019, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It is a vote. Is there a second motion related to the waiver of the fee?
I'll make a motion to approve the application and to waive the licensing fee.
Is there a second? Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It is a vote. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Enjoy your...
Rest of this warm weather.
Yes, you too. I'm conscious of the fact that I took that out of order. But I am going to ask, and we do have people waiting, that we do have a discussion item. I believe it is item 5I about our fifth meeting, and 5B. Can I have a motion to move those up, please? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is a vote. Okay. So, we are talking about a potential applicant coming in for an interview on the fifth Monday next week to have a meeting. I did ask the town manager, there are other items. Mrs. Kavanaugh would like to participate in the interview process. I know we have interviewed Mr. McCarthy for... I'm sorry, Mr. Marshall, for a different board, but it is our process to interview and ask the Chair to come in and speak with us. Does anybody have any issues with being able to come and meet? Mr. Berthel?
I will not be able to attend that meeting. I'll be in training out of town.
Okay.
I don't have an issue with the resume that I'm seeing, and I know we did interview Mr. Marshall before, so if there's a quorum, I have no problem there being a vote without me.
Anybody else have any issue with being able to attend? I don't know Mr. Holstrom's schedule, so I can't speak. So, may it just be the three of us?
I have a vacation day scheduled that day, but I will make a point to be back here for Senate.
Okay.
Through the Chair, I did check with the Chair, Mr. Holstrom, and he will share a check, and he would be available as well if needed.
Okay. So, it looks like at least four of us can make it, and so that'll be good. I don't believe we need a motion, because it is a regularly scheduled meeting. Do we need a motion to invite Mr. Marshall in, or is he already planning on coming?
Yeah, he's coming, so I think we just need to... On our end, post the meeting.
Okay. Sounds good. All right. Thank you. If we can move up item 5C, vote for recommendations for the October 15 special town meeting warrant articles.
Some of them.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Hearing none, it is a unanimous vote. All right. We are on item 5C, the warrant article. Article 1 is the particular boilerplate item. I don't really think we need to make a recommendation on it, but I don't know what Board members would like to do.
We don't generally make a recommendation on hearing reports.
Article 2 is to amend the various line items from recent and perhaps not too distant past town meeting votes. Does anybody have any questions? Mr. Kasenovich is here, and I'm sure he would love us to pepper him with all sorts of questions.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just give a brief summary.
Absolutely, Mr. Kasenovich.
Is requesting total bottom line reduction of $150,000. Seeking to amend various line items within the operating budget as a result of the state final numbers we received, as well as a significant... Total warrant, now that I'm talking about additions or subtractions. The total warrant request before you tonight totals $563,000 and change. Going from the annual town meeting, we were seeking utilization of tax levy of about 93.66% out of possible 2.5, which represented a level of taxation at 2.34. I am happy to say that based upon what's being presented tonight, the level of taxation drops from 93.66% to 47.70. It utilizes 1.19% out of total possible 2.5. We were able to reduce that burden of taxation, because our new growth came in significantly higher than what we estimated. That was actually certified today. We got that number today. As well as applying all of the final numbers that we received in the final state budget. So, in summary, that's what we will present at the fall town meeting. I don't see any changes to those numbers, either pre or post-town meeting, unless town meeting should amend or reject one of the warrant articles.
Thank you, Mr. Kasenovich. Does anybody have anything on Article 2? Seeing none, is there a motion for a recommendation?
I'll make a motion to recommend.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It is a vote. Article 3 is dealing with evento receipts. It looks like the town benefited from a slight increase in the transportation costs for homeless and/or unanticipated transportation for other students to their educational programs or act on anything there to... Questions? Motion?
It's a standard article. Make a motion to recommend.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It is a vote. Article 4 is also, as we say, a standard article. Aid receipts or reimbursements going from $185,000 to $200,000 for disabled special needs students, as well as tuition and transportation to and from. Does anybody have any questions on this item?
Motion to recommend.
Okay. Is there any discussion? I just have one question to Mr. Kasenovich. Are we seeing the $200,000? Is this an increase that we're getting, or is this just something that we're anticipating? That they have more needs than what we're... The receipts coming in?
So, last year, I believe there was an amendment that brought it up to the number 200. We actually received 220. So, they received more than what was appropriated. After having discussions with the superintendent and the school business manager, they believe that level of receipts is an expectation for FY '20 as well. That's why they're doing the amendment.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It is a vote. Article 5, to see if the town meeting will vote to repurpose CIP funds by amending Article 3 of the May 5, 2015 annual town meeting, package chug building rehab. It is to authorize the remaining $4,647.30 in the account to be combined with other CIP funds for package chug building rehab towards the installation of UNIVENTS at the school. Are there any questions? Is there a motion? Is there a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It is a vote. April 6, to see if the town meeting will vote to repurpose CIP funds by amending Article 4 of the May 2, 2017 annual town meeting, Auburn High School building rehab as follows. Authorize the remaining $11,360.88 to complete necessary upgrades to the stage at the Auburn High School. Are there any questions, comments? Is there a motion? Mr. Libberty?
I have a question about if we can get more details of what the renovations are or the upgrades are.
Jacobson? I don't see anybody from the school department here. Or Mr. Kasenovich?
I wish I could help you out with those specifics. I don't know what they are.
I read this and kind of felt the same way, but when I was on the stage recently, you know, it really was pretty basic on the high school stage. So, I'm guessing that, you know, they're trying to make some improvements just on, you know, the stability of the apparatus and things for light fixtures and things like that. It was pretty basic when I was there. So, $11,360, I don't have a problem with that, and I would suggest that we just recommend, and I assume that, you know, they've put some thought into this, and it's not a lot of money.
Mr. Libberty? Want to hold it till next week, or...
I'd rather hold it and see. Like Mr. Berthel said, it's not a lot of money that's going to make a big difference. So, I have no problem with us voting to recommend it tonight if that's how the majority of the Board feels. My feeling would just be to hold off, but I'm fine with either.
Rich, do you have an opinion either way?
I do not.
In that there is an outstanding question, I would appreciate it if we could hold this to next week. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion to hold off recommending until our next meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It is a vote. Article 7 is to appropriate a sum of money from free cash to the town stabilization fund.
Mr. Kasenovich?
So, although we have official certification of our free cash, I had discussions as late as the close of business on Friday with our field rep, who has already forwarded a number to the director to be certified. Our rep indicated that could come to us probably by midweek, because there is a backlog of reviewing those. But the number she gave me would give us about a $1.648 million gain over last year's free cash. That being said, under the current financial policy of utilization of that net gain, we would be able to appropriate up to 50%. That would be about 825,000. The total amount of requests on this warrant, there are other funding articles that are requesting money from free cash, and with the recommendation of 300 for Article 7 and 100,000 for OPEB on the following article, it would give us... It would leave us a balance of about $180,000 of unused free cash under the policy. So, would I using 100% of that available?
Thank you. Does anybody else have any other questions on that? Seeing none, is there a motion? Is there a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? It is a vote. Article 8, to see if town meeting will vote to appropriate the sum of... We'll leave it. Ed might feel more generous, and he might give us a little more for OPEB. Is there a motion, or is there any questions?
Motion to recommend.
Is there a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It is a vote. Article 9, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of $20,000 from free cash for electronic payroll check advices. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns?
I'd like to just hear a little bit about what this is.
Mr. Kasenovich, and Mrs. Jacobson, can you fill us in on what this is?
So, currently, we issue on our payroll runs every week, we issue paystubs that go to the employees. This would electronically allow the employees to go into a gateway system, log in, and check out their payroll, their withholdings, the history of their payroll checks. It may be helpful to the employee for type of loan applications, as well as payroll verification. Not only that, but administratively, it saves us a lot of time stuffing those checks. You have employees come up to the town hall on a weekly basis, and it takes a patrolman off the road. They have to come and pick up the checks. Everyone's coming up. It just doesn't make sense with today's technology. This is a one-time cost. It's a joint venture with the school department. They've been looking to do this as well. So, we're going to join forces and hopefully get this done if approved by town meeting.
Make a motion to recommend.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It is a vote. Article 10 is to see if town meeting will vote to rescind unused borrowing authorizations previously voted by the town, Auburn Middle School project for 20-plus million, and MSBA school roof projects, Auburn Middle School and Bryn Mawr for 3 million and change. Does anybody have any questions? Mr. Kasenovich, do you have anything that you'd like to share?
A rough explanation?
Sir?
I know these seem like a significant amount, but when we... When the project is approved, MSBA in the bonding authority requires a full authorization of the cost of the project, even though we're knowing we're getting a reimbursement from the state. This basically represents the state share in those projects. Once we reimburse 100%, we rescind the balance of that debt, and we're just getting it off the books, just to show any bond prospectors who are interested in buying our bonds, they'll know that we're not potentially going to incur this debt. We're just taking it off the books.
Does anybody have any questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to recommend.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? It is a vote. Article 11, to see if town meeting will vote to appropriate $32,500 from package chug course enterprise retained earnings for the purchase of a tractor to be used at package chug golf course and by the parks department. Mr. Coyle, would you like to join us up here in case there's any questions? It looks like you're the sponsor.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Can you just give us some idea of what this would be used for?
Absolutely. So, we are requesting $32,500 to be used on golf course retained earnings. I believe we have a balance of about $140,000 in retained earnings, and the superintendent has indicated to me that it's something that he desperately needs. Over the past few years now, we've been trying to share resources and utilize the POCs tractor. But typically, every time we... The golf course needs to use the tractor, the POCs department needs it as well. So, this is something that would allow them to do a lot of drainage improvements that are much needed as well, and as time allows for them to work on the drainage, the tractor would be available. This is going to be shared with the POCs department, so this represents half the cost of the total cost of the tractor itself. The other half would come through the POCs, through the revolving accounts, through PAPSS and through recreation.
Those would be housed at package chug golf course?
Yes, correct. Yes.
Does any other Board members have any questions for Mr. Coyle, or a motion?
Motion to recommend.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It is a vote.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Article 12 is CIP repurposed by amending the Article 4 of May 1, 2018 town meeting fire service truck as follows. Authorize the amount of $9,236 to be used for the purpose of equipping fire engine 1 with miscellaneous equipment to place it in service as a front-line engine. I know a Board member had a question, so I see the chief, Captain Brigham, we actually agree today. So, if somebody would like to come up and just share this, that would be great.
Good evening, members of Board.
Good evening, Chief.
This article, as it states, is to repurpose that CIP money. Engine number 1 will now become a spare truck, since we have taken delivery of our new pump engine 4. Historically, when we buy new pumps, we do not buy the truck with equipment. We transfer equipment from whatever piece is going out of service onto the new truck. So, typically, what happens is when the spare pump, which sits out at West Street, when one of our two primary pumps has to go out of service, we have to take the equipment from the truck that's going out of service and put it on to the spare, which, you know, takes a considerable amount of time. And we have to do that, whether it's going to the DPW for a three-hour repair or a three-day repair. We have to transfer that equipment. The other problem that we run into is when our two main pumps are tied up on calls, and we do a recall for station coverage, when the crews come back, they don't actually have a pump that they can just jump into and respond to a call. So, this $9,200 will buy some miscellaneous hand tools and adapters and things like that that we'll be able to put on the truck. That way, the truck is not necessarily considered spare status. It is able to respond to an emergency regardless.
Now, this $9,000... This is left over because of...
So, this $9,200 actually inadvertently, there was an additional year's lease payment that was carried over into that fiscal year. So, it was a five-year lease for that service truck. But for whatever reason, this $9,200 was put into the CIP really as a year six. So, it was discovered that it was inadvertently put in there, and it was discovered that that $9,200 was not needed, because the truck is already paid off.
Do Board members have any further questions? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Motion to recommend.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is a vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have several from the Department of Inspection Services, and I do see Mrs. Coyle hiding in the back. If she would come up and sit in case there's any questions for her, that would be great. So, our first one is Article 13, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate $16,000 from available funds from dog licenses for the purposes of floor repairs and fencing at the animal compound. I know we did get an email, a Board member had questions, and we did get some feedback on these articles, but I don't know if anybody else has further questions. Mr. Berthel?
Will 13, 14, 15, pretty much all for the same thing, flooring and fences. As I see, $16,000, 2196, 97. So, when you give your explanation of what was included, I'll give you a follow-up.
Thank you. So, the articles are all somewhat related. The purposes of the funding is all for the kennel. They have been identified for 13 and 14. We have floor repairs and fencing. And then, the last, Article 15, is more miscellaneous, because we have some issues with roofing with windows. We have brand-new windows in the kennel that are actually leaking water into the building. We didn't know that until the windows were installed more recently. And then, we also have some asphalt that's breaking apart in the kennels. And then we also have some asphalt that's breaking apart in the kennels. So that is a little bit more general for some of the issues that are happening there. The first two articles, as you may know, we've had several applications of flooring tried in the kennel and due to the harsh environment with the animal waste and the harsh cleaning products that we need in order to sanitize the floor or attempt to. Both of those applications have failed. I think the animal control officer had sent pictures. So we're trying to seal the concrete floor, but it's not sealed. So that's... Makes it an environment that can promote disease, especially when we're dealing with feces and urine.
Is there a proven, like, flooring that we should be installing that might cost a little bit more? Is there any particular type of floor that you guys have looked into?
So that's a great question. We did try to... We tried some less expensive options because we thought that they may hold up. But the money request that we're asking for is for a professional company that does this type of work to come in for the kennel, so that we expect that once this floor is in, it should do the job.
So it's a new floor, it's not a regular floor?
It's going to be a floor sealant.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just in case anybody is watching from home and really wants to know, Articles 14 and 15, there's money left over in those accounts because of estimates were more generous than thankfully the actual cost of the expense. Is that a fair...
Sure, that is fair. So Article 14, we did have money for cameras. The cameras were installed at the kennel, so we're happy that those are now active for security purposes. And there was some money left over in that account. So we're hoping to repurpose that money that has already been voted by town meeting for the purpose of the floor repairs. And same for the... We had Article 15, we had money from dog fines account.
Question, I think, to the town account on the dog license fees. How much is in that account? This is, I'm sure it's not depleting it, but...
$9,000? Last time I looked? Maybe a little less. I know Don, we took a look at it, but yes.
An estimate works. More than enough. You're leaving more than enough. Anybody else have any other questions? Is there a motion to recommend on Article 13?
Motion to recommend.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those opposed. All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Article 14.
Motion to recommend.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, it is a vote. Article 15.
Motion to recommend.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say?
Aye.
All opposed, it is a vote. Article 16 is on the plastic bag reduction bylaw, which I believe is also Mrs. Coyle's. Busy night for you. Do you have anything for us, anything to... That you wanted to share before board members ask questions or...
Sure. I think the... This Article 16 was proposed by the Board of Selectmen. And the... At the last meeting, I know there was some discussion regarding some concerns about enforcement and just identifying how that may look if we were to have to go about enforcement. You know, obviously with any new bylaw, there's going to be an adjustment period, and we want to be able to get information and education out to the businesses because this will have an impact on them. But taking a look at some of the comments that had come up at the last meeting, we looked at how it was set up and how it may be proposed. So I think in your packets, you have a fine schedule. We looked at that fine schedule for how it applied in other applications, and we found that because I think maybe some of the concerns that you had brought up and then, you know, kind of talking internally, if it's a fine schedule, could we actually propose a warning? And it actually has been done before in the fine schedule. I think there's a warning under possibly the false alarm under fire and rescue. I think when there's a false alarm, there's first and second warnings. And then it goes on to third, fourth, and fifth offenses with a monetary amount. So, you know, obviously, we want to be as friendly as we can in knowing that this is going to be a new bylaw for the businesses to get used to. So we wanted to propose the first offense as a warning. We think that that would be a way to be able to work with business and give them a chance to understand what the bylaw is, how it's going to... How they're going to need to apply it. And then with the second and the third offenses, we have monetary amounts. Hopefully, that answers at least some of the questions that you may have been wondering in that we think hopefully will work.
Comments or questions? Mrs. Goodrich.
I just have a question on the process. In the very last sentence, it says this bylaw shall take effect six months after having been approved at town meeting or act on anything relative there to... Mrs. Jacobson, what is the process? Does this go to... Does this go to the Attorney General? And generally, when it goes to the Attorney General, what's the timeline for that?
So as a zoning bylaw, it would go to the Attorney General's office. As a general bylaw, I don't believe it has to go to the Attorney General's office, although we did send our general bylaws to the Attorney General's office before, and they have 90 days within which to approve.
So will we send this to the Attorney General's office?
I believe this has to go to the... This was planning on going to the Attorney General's office. I want to check with the town clerk.
Yeah, I think we'll check with town clerk.
So my question is if it's... If the bylaw is passed by town meeting and then according to the bylaw, it takes effect for in six months. Do we begin the work on moving forward with this bylaw in anticipation that the Attorney General will have no issues with it?
Through the chair, when the Attorney General's office reviews and ultimately approves of bylaws, they become effective on the date that town meeting approved the bylaw, not the date that the Attorney General did. So even if the Attorney General took time, it goes back to that town meeting date. And then there's a required posting that the town clerk has to do, but the effective date actually goes back. So it will go back that three months. So yes, we would prepare now, recognizing that the six-month date that's in here now would remain in there. It wouldn't put it off any further if the Attorney General took, you know, the full 90 days to...
Okay. So if it passes town meeting, will begin public notification and awareness of this new bylaw immediately?
I would want to move in that direction, you know, not wasting any time if it's something that town meeting votes through.
Great, thanks.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none.
Make a motion to recommend.
I actually have something.
Oh.
I did spend quite a bit of time looking at this and looking at our process and the timeline and... Because I'm very concerned about the bylaw. I am not comfortable with the bylaw. I'm not comfortable how it came to be a warrant article with our name attached to it without us having a chance to discuss it. So two years ago, roughly, in August of 2017, we first authorized Selectmen Liberty to study a potential plastic bag bylaw. I'm not sure if we anticipated the demands on the zoning bylaw committee or the solid waste committee to review and make revisions when we voted on June 10 of 2019. With summer months ahead and a lighter need to meet, there wasn't enough time to get a revised draft to us prior to the town meeting warrant. I did see that they both met once in July. Their minutes weren't available, so I can't see what recommendations they made. Our vote on June 10 was to forward the draft to the zoning bylaw review committee and the solid waste committee to review and make revisions if appropriate. There was no language in that motion to bring this to a fall town meeting. So my general point is this is not a revised bylaw, this is a total revision, something that the board did start, certainly. And I certainly appreciate people's thoughts, but I don't want personally, for me as a board member, my name attached to something that I haven't had a chance to review and discuss. So I would ask that we recommend that this item be tabled at town meeting and that we take some time to prepare, have some more further discussions. I have several items that I would like to see added, one of which is a warning section, which is... Has been adopted by Boston and Springfield, two of the most populous communities in the Commonwealth. And I'm sure that the legislature would consider their proposals when drafting their own bills. In the enforcement section, I would also like to see a 30-day reprieve, which was also adopted in at least two of the cities, between fines. Boston and Worcester, also, we ban it, but Boston, Worcester, and Springfield all include in the reusable bag definition, a bag of varying mill, either three or four mills. I would not wish to deny somebody in Shaw's in town uses a bag reusable that is three mills. So I would not want them to have to re-machine, as I've been told could be possible. I'd like to see us include the compostable and marine bags that meet the ASTM standards. Each of the three cities do that. In the retail definition section, I would like a clear exemption, which the cities of Worcester and Boston give to bazaars, festivals operated by nonprofit or religious institutions. It is not clear whether they would be adversely affected by this bylaw because there's nothing in it that says they can do it. There's something in there that I'm still kind of questioning about if they're giving direct aid to someone. I don't know if that would suit for that or not. So that's the question I have. I do know Mr. Liberty did go to the Chamber of Commerce. Have we shared this draft with them and gotten their feedback? Because that was a big part of what we asked him to do when he proposed the bylaw. So I'm concerned that we may be springing this on the business community, and we certainly want their cooperation. We want them to feel included. There are several things that I love about the bylaw. I think we certainly have a very robust retail establishment definition, which far exceeds what any of the cities have. So I think that's positive. But those are some things that I would like to see. I don't know if other board members are concerned about this, but I felt that I needed to share my concern with you all. Mr. Liberty.
So it's my understanding that tonight we'd be able to amend the bylaw in any way that might satisfy some of the concerns that you had. My feeling on it is that we sent it to the Board of Health for a reason, since they'll be the enforcing agent. The original bylaw that I had drafted maybe wasn't great for them, and I think with the revisions after reviewing it again, if that's... Anything in there makes it easier for the enforcing agent, then I'm pretty supportive of that. So I'm fine with it the way it is, but I'm open to any amendments that you'd like to see put in there tonight if that's still possible. Other than that, I would support the recommendation.
Mrs. Jacobson, do you have anything on that? Can we make revisions this late in the game?
Through the chair, the board, it is your item. You can make revisions that warrant has not been sent out. Again, just from our perspective, this was, you know, we did get it to you two weeks before tonight, so we do feel that, you know, we had two weeks to get it to you. It's been worked on for months by town administration and the various boards and commissions. I agree with Mr. Liberty. I think the board that's actually doing the enforcement of this, it's important for them to have what they needed included in it, and I think that's in there. That being said, the simple answer to the question is the board, if you make a motion and it passes, you can amend this and we can make changes to it. My feeling is that we asked the other boards and commissions to look at this and come back with their recommendations. If this board makes changes, I would think that in fairness, it should go back to those boards and commissions that made the changes for them to review it again. I also... We were not asked to send it to the Chamber of Commerce, so it was not sent to them. This is a... It's a document that will be administered by the Board of Health, so I think that their input was important. I do know that Mr. Liberty did meet with members of the chamber and spoke at length about some of the input that he received from them. So it wasn't our place to go and seek the chamber input as much as the board input. So anything can be done. This is your article. It's sponsored by the Board of Selectmen.
I don't know what other board members feel. I think if the Board of Health is taking the yeoman's work on this, and I think when I look at the amount of meetings that we held on this item, I certainly don't think this board is... Takes a backseat to any board in the amount of time and effort we've put into this. Preparing a warrant article, again, that was not the motion. To me, when you revise something completely, and maybe it's great, and maybe it's wonderful, and that's fine, but you're asking me to sponsor something that I basically have nothing... So I don't feel the Board of Selectmen should be the sponsor. If the Board of Health wants to sponsor because they think it's... This is going to work for them, then I certainly have no problem with that. I will not support the article because I have severe reservations. Two weeks is not enough to discuss this. We've spent two years trying to get to this point. I'm not a fan of let's do things three weeks before town meeting. I'm not a fan of that. I've never done that as a member of a board. I've prepared many, many articles in 23 years for town meeting and presented it, and I've never left a board three weeks to consider something. But it's up to the board what they would like to do, and... Or we could table it to next week and people can think about it. Mr. Berthew.
I guess... So this is what basically doing what the rules would be if a bag ban were to take effect.
Correct.
But nobody has voted on a bag ban in town. Is that correct?
Through the chair, this all came about as a result of a vote by this board to send this to the voters of the community, which it did go to the voters in May on the ballot. And on that ballot, and I apologize, I don't have that ballot and vote number with me, but it passed overwhelmingly with the voters to ban plastic bags. So the next step is with that vote by the voters, it has to become a bylaw. Just the vote alone doesn't make it a bylaw. So the next step has to be a bylaw. So whether the board took a vote to have it at fall town meeting as an article or not, it still has to be an article at some point because that's what the voters of this community asked for. So we are fulfilling what the voters asked for by creating the bylaw to go along with the vote that they took and made. But just their vote alone doesn't make it banned.
So for point of clarification, even if we accept, recommend the article for the bylaw, we still... It still needs to... We still need to have another town vote to actually have a bag ban. So our last vote was basically saying, would you be in favor if the town were to move forward toward a bag ban? So in that case where we're not actually putting this into play, so to speak, even if we recommend this and we want to make other revisions, couldn't that... if we recommend this and we want to make other revisions, couldn't that go on another article somewhere down the line?
Yes, it can. Once it's a bylaw, it can be amended. It would have to go through the same process for amendment, but it can be. And just to be clear, it just handed this to me, so thank you. The actual, it was a non-binding referendum, question one, and it asked if the residents supported pursuing a bylaw that would restrict the use of thin film, single-use plastic bags by retail establishments. So that is exactly what we did. We pursued the bylaw in accordance with the vote. And yes, once it's passed, it can be amended at a later date if there are tweaks to it, changes to it. And also, keeping in mind, there's state legislation that is pending and has been pending every year. The legislation that's pending right now, my understanding is, there are some sections of that that would state that the state law would supersede any local, and I know the MMAA and a number of communities that already have plastic bag bylaws are opposing that because they want to keep local control as opposed to a state mandate to follow the state procedure. So I know the Board of Health put a lot of time into this, as did the zoning bylaw review committee, to make sure that the language that they came up with was close to what some of the legislation has been at the state level, so that hopefully, if they put back the local option, then this bylaw will remain as is. But down the road, it might have to be amended again, depending on how that state legislation goes.
Mr. Bertheum.
So having heard all of that, and with Mr. Copeland having some good points, I see it probably being revised somewhere down the line, but in respect for all the boards that did put this together, I would probably just recommend it to go to the board.
So I just had a question of clarification for Mr. Bertheum. He just said this has to go to another town vote. It's a town meeting vote. It's not a full town vote. I just want to be sure that that's what we're talking about, the town vote, meeting, town meeting. Okay. Yes. And I understand this is brand-new to the town and brand-new to a lot of communities, and there may need to be adjustments made to the bylaw. But I think, Mr. Libberty, this has been something that you've worked on since first being elected, and it has my support.
My concern to your points is, we're going to release this, the community businesses are going to get themselves in line for this, and if we do want to make changes, now we're making them spend money twice, or worse. So to me, I mean, and again, it's a board vote. I will not support it. I do not believe we should be sponsoring it. It is not something we prepared. It's not something we discussed. So if the Board of Health would like to do that and take responsibility for it, that's fine. Myself, I have severe reservations. All of the cities have also put their drafts based on what the vagaries of whatever legislator has decided that they want to put on this issue. There's probably thousands of bills that have been sponsored in the great and general court, and they haven't gotten to the end of the road. And I'm sure they all have a little different version, but to me, I think we have the three most populous communities. I think their wisdom is something that the legislature will look at. It's something that you don't just amend a bylaw and expect people to spend money after you've just asked them to spend money. That's my opinion. But having said that, if there is a motion, I am prepared to hear it. Mr. Libberty.
I just wanted to also add, when I was reviewing the bylaws from other communities and the situations in which they were implemented, I want to say it was Concord. Don't hold me to that. It might be off. It was a town in eastern Mass that went through a very similar process where they had a bylaw draft, then they changed it to fit what they thought the state was about to pass. The state obviously didn't. And then they went back a few months later and amended it to what they originally had. So it's not, Auburn wouldn't be the first if that happened to, if we went back and amended it again. But as I already said, I support the draft of the Board of Health.
Would you like to make a motion, one way or the other, Mr. Libberty?
This motion has already been made by-
It has not.
I'll make a motion to recommend.
Is there a second? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, aye. It is a vote. I believe, Mrs. Corle, you are not done yet. Or is Mr. Menard going to Tiny Homes, or are you going to tag team it tonight?
Mr. Menard is here, and I'm happy to stay to support.
Are we going, are we going out of order?
I apologize. We have 17, so Mr. Mitchell is here, and I'm sure he just lives to come up and chat This is to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate $38,000 from sewer enterprise retained earnings for engineering associated with the replacement of sewer line under the bridge of Bancroft Street.
Good evening.
Good evening. Can you give us some idea of what this is about?
Absolutely. Earlier in the, early spring, the DOT was doing their annual or biannual bridge inspections, and they found an area on Bancroft Street where we have a gravity sewer line that is actually suspended from the bottom of the bridge. And they sent pictures of fairly bad conditions of the sewer line. The sewer line was actually damaged while it was installed back in late '70s originally. It was damaged mid to late '90s by a truck hauling something that it shouldn't have been hauling down the turnpike, and the pipe was struck. It was replaced or repaired and replaced, but it wasn't replaced the way it should have been. So there are some, some of the joints within the pipe are in poor condition, they're in rotten condition, so what we want to do is somewhat, be somewhat proactive and replace it before we have an emergency situation.
Anybody have any questions, comments, concerns? Is there a motion?
Motion to recommend.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed it as well. Thank you, Jeff. Have a good night. All right, we have item 18. Lieutenant Lem, and I'm assuming is standing in for the police chief. Would you like to join us at the table? To see if town meeting will vote to appropriate $25,000 from free cash to, for the installation of a remote receiver to cover the junction of 12 and 20. How are you?
Good evening, honourable members of the board. So I'll try to keep it brief and succinct. West Auburn from Route 12 and 20 is a deficit for the Police Department for emergency communications for our primary frequency. We're very fortunate to have a good partner with the Auburn Water District, all the Auburn Water Commissioners, Kenny Smith, who has graciously allowed us to house our primary and secondary communications equipment at their facilities, because their key geographic locations here in the town of Auburn, one being Rochdale Street, which is Crowell Hill. That's our primary. Our secondary is Lester Street. This past year, just put up, erected two brand-new water tanks up there. If you haven't seen it, you should take a ride up there. It's actually kind of impressive. It looks down over the whole city of Worcester. So that's a, that's a key location for us, for having it as a communications location for us. But because of the Granger cliffs that are in West Auburn, that's where the developer is planning on putting in the 320 units on the Auburn side and another 320 units on the Oxford side, it remains an area of concern for us, because in layman's terms, when we key our mics down there at 12 and 20, we have no communications at all. So we are fortunate enough to have one of our town meeting members, Joe Shanet, who's very technically smart and works well with Kenny Smith, and they were able to devise a plan with Worcester Mobile Communications to, and Ken Smith, who's now putting up two brand-new water tanks up on Prospect Street. If the members of the board are aware that if you drive up Prospect Street, they're doing essentially the same project. So we're very fortunate to have Bill Coyle and Kenny Fairbanks and his team with facilities to assist us in reduce costs by constructing a pad and a small building unit that will house a transceiver, or what they call a voter, on that location on Prospect Street, which will, I'm told, it's beyond my technical expertise, but I'm told that will enhance communications and solve the problem that we're having down there. So it was an unanticipated cost, only because the Auburn Water District is a, is not a town entity, it's a private organization, and I wasn't, this wasn't brought to our attention until afterwards. And the Water District actually paid for, with these two new water tanks, in ten amounts at their own cost, knowing that we'd want to do this. So it's, it's the perfect storm of good news to solve a longstanding problem with communication. So that's why that $25,000 submitted was there, is to cover the installation, purchase of the equipment with the town and these private entities to erect that on the towers. Hope I didn't bore you.
Questions?
Not as exciting as bags.
Anybody have any questions, comments, concerns?
I'll just comment that it is exciting when you live in West Auburn, and there's a concern for lack of communication, so.
Yes, and that's-
I'm excited about this.
Thank you, Ms. Goodrich. And yes, it's, it's, I guess that's the part that I missed saying. It's going to enhance the officer's safety, and it's going to enhance public safety. So it's an important issue.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Motion to recommend.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed it as well. Thank you, Lieutenant. Have a good night. Take you too. All right, now, Mr. Menard, I apologize for calling you out of order. Article 19 involves an amendment to Section 13 of the Tiny Homes of the zoning bylaw, Section 13.5.6.1, and Section 13.5.6.2, an appendix Q of the International Residential Code. I will not read it all, but thank you. Mr. Menard, do you have anything for us?
So this change, if you call it tiny home bylaws approved at the spring town meeting, this particular amendment to that bylaw was recommended by town council. Basically, it will adopt, approve, the town will adopt the appendix Q, the International Building Code, which specifically has building code regarding tiny homes. Tiny home building code is different than the regular home, certain restrictions, certain requirements, and it's all spelled out, and you can help, there's quite a few items that it addresses. So this was recommended by town council, so we brought it before you.
Does anybody have any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Motion to recommend.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is a vote. Article 20, to see if the town meeting will vote to amend Section 4.5 of the zoning bylaw, Regional Mall Overlay District, by amending Section 4.5.3.1, Section 4.5.5, and the table of uses, Section 3.1 as follows. Mr. Menard, do you have anything for us?
Yes, this is a proactive proposal the planning board's making to keep, to try to keep the mall viable assets of kind of the center of town. Want to make sure it remains successful. Specifically, some of the changes that it will address will allow medical center and medical offices, which relying on current existence will make it kind of in allowable if they, if another company, if like that decides to utilize the mall. It also would allow multiple buildings to be on the same, same lot, and another option that the mall may have in the future, as well as changes to the setbacks. It also would allow trade or educational use as a for-profit business. That would be a new use. Got a new option, possibly something that might be allowed in the future. Again, it's this kind of proactive proposal. I would hope to work with the mall to keep it viable.
Board members have any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Motion to recommend.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it is a vote. Thank you. And I think there's, last but not least, Article 21, to see if town meeting will vote to amend the zoning map of the town of Auburn, Massachusetts, to resolve discrepancies and to extend the industrial park district by rezoning the following properties. There's a list. Mr. Menard, do you have anything further?
Yes, I spent a lot of time looking at the zoning map, and the planning board does as well. One of the things that we noticed was several parcels in the Sword Street industrial park area are split between two different zones. Some of them are split between the industrial park as well as residential use. This proposal would follow the parcel lines and make those partially split, all industrial park, they'll kind of remove the residential district. I believe you have maps of the proposal, you pack it, as well as some maps I brought forward if you want some more detail. It would also extend the industrial park along Sword Street towards the east and up Southwood Street on the west side, towards the Worcester Line. Most of this area is already kind of an industrial area, has the Polaris facilities, as well as several other facilities. Currently, those parcels are zoned general industry. Being zoned industrial park would give them another option to allow multiple businesses in one building. This is kind of a trend that we've been seeing in the region, how startup companies can't really afford to write down a whole space, or they'll go in with multiple companies and split the costs that way. Seen a lot in Worcester in their startups. So, yeah, this is, we thought this is not only clean up the Sword Street area, but as well as be proactive, try to encourage new and different kinds of businesses to come to Auburn.
Do board members have any comments, questions, or concerns? Mr. Bertheum.
So neighbors have had their fair turn to give any opinions, or, I know there's a neighborhood behind all of that Sword Street stuff, so they've, they've had their-
Yep. All property owners were notified, as well as all Butters were notified. They were notified specifically of the public hearing, which is occurring tomorrow night at the planning board meeting. They were invited to attend. I did receive a couple phone calls from some of the property owners up by the Worcester Line and the residents, and they really didn't have any problem with it, they just were curious about the change.
Chair, I'd like to add also that I want to thank Adam and Darlene and their team for doing that, because there is no legal requirement for about a notification. So they did this because they felt it was important to keep the Butters informed, but there is no legal requirement to do so, and they went above and beyond. I believe they went the 300-foot buffer-
Yes.
-that would be normally a requirement, if it was a requirement, as well as notifying those property owners that were. And also, I just want to mention, because I believe we sent out an email earlier, I want to make sure everyone knows that the list that is in the warrant of the streets has been revised.
If I can just interrupt for a second, I'm just really with this air conditioner on, having a hard time hearing, like, from that side of the room. If you guys can just speak up a little bit louder, thanks.
I know. So I just want to make sure everyone's aware, and forgive me if you are, but we replaced the list that's actually in the first warrant that you received. The zoning map is fine, that doesn't change. There was a change on the street address. There were two errors. What was in the warrant was an older version, it had since been changed. So you'll note that Rockaway Road was removed, it's not supposed to be in there.
Correct.
And then a small sliver on Evers Street was-
Yes, correct.
...added. The map remains the same as what was submitted to you and in the warrant. And those changes will be made in the warrant when it's mailed out next Monday.
Anybody else have any questions, comments, concerns? Okay. I do have concerns about several parcels. On Evers Street, I did visit all of the areas. I'm glad that Rockaway Road was taken off. I did visit the area, I did look. I think all of these buildings are using the extent of their property, which is good. However, Evers Street is a residential neighborhood. If we keep them in the current zoning, we will basically take the top of Evers Street to Dyton Street, which is also a residential neighborhood, and turn it into an industrial zone. Now, I'm well aware that at some point, the town, in its wisdom, decided to make these industrial. It is not appropriate zoning for me. These should be residential. It should be, there is no industry in that area or in those neighborhoods at all. 18 Tracy Street, 3 Seneca Street, not a drop of industry. Evers Street, Polaris below them. I would ask the board to hold this till next week. I would like to see the outcome of the planning board meeting and hearing tomorrow night, but I did want to ask if the board would consider sending a memo to the planning board asking that they remove 5, 7, Dyton Street, 3 Seneca Street, the Evers Street addresses, and the 18 Tracy place, and recommend that they be removed from the rezoning, and that hopefully, after further review, they might- might come in and be more properly zoned, say, in the annual town meeting. That's, that's all I have. I don't know if any of the board members have comments, questions, or concerns, but that is a concern for me. Mr. LaLiberty?
I'd have no problem holding off on it if that's the feeling of the board. I do have a question for Mr. Menard through the chair. Why were the, I'm fairly familiar with the area, mainly because I have family on Franklin Street, but why were the streets that Mr. Carpenter mentioned rezoned, specifically those ones that?
It was for consistency, we're looking to change part of the general industry area already, and it's a small area, and it's already previously existing non-conforming lots, so we just look to extend the districts in a whole way. And there's also, there would be the concern of if that area was left as is, it might be considered spot zoning, and the Attorney General generally doesn't like spot zoning, and the whole proposal might be turned down by the Attorney General.
Mrs. Goodrich?
Thank you. I have no problem holding this, I'm not comfortable sending a memo to the planning board. I mean, I know you mentioned them quickly, I'm not even sure which streets you mentioned, but I'm not comfortable enough or familiar with them enough to send a memo to the planning board. Is this the meeting that is Wednesday night?
Through the chair, there's two meetings tomorrow night, is the planning board hearing on this.
Okay.
And Wednesday evening is a meeting that we're scheduling for town meeting members to answer any questions they have on zoning articles.
So, again, I don't have a problem holding this, I'm just not comfortable sending a memo on a few streets being pulled out that I'm not familiar with or prepared to take a vote on tonight.
Is there a motion to hold this till our next meeting?
I'll make a motion to hold this until our next meeting on September 27.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it is a vote. Thank you very much, have a good night. I don't think you have anything else, do you? Article 22, which is to see if town meeting will vote to grant National Grid temporary or permanent easement over and under town property in Dronav for various purposes. I saw that council had some recommended change to the language, I'm assuming that's going to be done without any need for us to comment upon it.
Through the chair, this is a result of a need to grant an easement. Mr. Mitchell's here, if you wanted some specific information. This has been a very complicated process. Initially, we were trying to do this through National Grid to move it along, to do a temporary license, that was not working very well, given some feedback from National Grid that we weren't happy with their language. So Town Council has then suggested, in order to get, grant any easement, town meeting does need to vote to give the board, I believe the actual vote is to give the board of selectmen the authority to sign and grant the easement. So that's, it's specific to give you the authority, but I'd like to ask Mr. Mitchell to just explain what this project is and why National Grid is requesting this.
Mr. Mitchell? As a background to this, this is the completion of the four pump station rehab project that's been ongoing since last year. This is the final stage. The pump station has been rebuilt, and now we're waiting to be reconnected to National Grid Power. Right now, it's running on a portable pump, it's keeping the flow going. So as a background, back in the 70s, when the initial station was built, National, New England Telephone owned all the telephone poles. They did the installation, and National Grid, I guess, rented space from the poles or whatnot. So for the new connections, new power connections, the National Grid has deemed that they need to install new poles. So National Grid's procedures is, they must be granted an easement. New England Telephone was just a gentleman, a handshake type of thing, they put a pole up where it needed, ran the wires, and everybody was happy. Nowadays, National Grid's a little bit more strict on what they do. They require an easement, whereas it's in the back section of a property, it's not right on the street. So in order for us, for National Grid to even consider giving us power, we must grant them the easement so they can come on the property, run the new, run the new lines, on the new pole with the new transformers.
Does anybody have any further questions? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Mitchell, have a good night. Is there a motion?
Motion to recommend.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it is a vote. Article 23 is from Mr. Coyle, and it is to see if the town will vote $200,000 from free cash for roadway municipal drainage improvements, compliance with EPA National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. How are you?
Good evening again, very good, thank you. So you may recall during the budget season, I had asked for an additional $200,000 on the stormwater replace pipes and catch basins article, we're currently funding it $180,000. And so this is something the administration had indicated that at that time, we were unable to fund that item, but that we potentially revisit this at town meeting, so thankfully that's before town meeting voters this year, hopefully. Just a brief overview of what the funding would be used for. Last year, the engineering department filed the town's first notice of intent as an MS4 community through NPTZ, and I can say what all these acronyms are, but basically what it means is EPA is mandating us to do a lot of work. And so the funds would allow us to begin with some of the repairs and replacement to our drainage infrastructure. We're going, we are required to inspect our entire system, and by year three, have the entire system inspected and all outfalls also monitored. We have to test wet weather, dry weather, outfalls, and so year one has been a lot of more administrative work, with working with regulations and different requirements that we have to do going forward. So basically, they, we're committing to doing a lot of items over the next four to 10 years. So year one is basically 54-page documents that we are submitting to EPA, saying, here's what we will do. And they basically tell you, this is what you will do. But now we're documenting how we're going to do it. So this $200,000 will help us with some of the, what we call best management practices, BMPs, to be implemented, and they call some of them are storm scepters, to remove TSS total suspended solids from, from the water before it discharges into the rivers and streams, and, you know, even simple things as hoods on as many of the catch basins as we can, just if there's any floating oils or gasolines in those catch basins that we're able to collect those before they discharge into the water bodies as well. So this is a move that would, would help us, you know, with being able to comply with EPA mandates.
Anybody have any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I do have a question from Mr. Kanzenovich. Is this considered operational expenses, or it is not? Because I know free cash was not allowed to be used in the operational budget, and it sounds like it's on the line, so I just kind of want some clarification.
No, it was made clear to us that this is a, an outside article for capital expenditures, although what I did tell the finance committee at the meeting last week is this will now become a priority for town administration to address in the upcoming budget, to increase the operational side of the budget, to deal with these costs on an annual basis. So I think we have to tackle it from two fronts. One, this gives Bill some flexibility to address some of his drainage issues, capital, emphasis on, but also we need to address on the operational side, some of the day-to-day costs associated with these mandates as well.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion to recommend.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it is a vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do know we have two grants, and I do believe we have three members of the fire department. Could we move uptown manager items 6B, A, B, and C? Three, triple threat. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it is a vote. Good evening, Chief Coleman.
Good evening, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Can you fill us in? I know we got some emails, and I saw some blasts on social media, trumpeting the good news, so.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. I'm very happy to be here tonight with Deputy Chief Johnson, Captain Brigham, who were part of the grants team, along with myself, who put the information together for both of these two grants. As you remember, back in March, I appeared for you, before you, and you gave permission for us to apply for these two federal grants, and I'm happy to be here tonight to talk you, talk to you, and announce publicly that we were successful in both of these federal grant awards. The SAFER award was a total of $340,508, and our AFG award, the Assistance to Firefight a Grant Award, for the Regional Training Tower was for $477,233. So that, coupled with the required 10% match on the training tower side, gives us a total of $525,000. That 10% match is being divided between the remaining 10 communities that we went in on the grant, so each community's breakdown essentially was $4,300, is what was required for their 10%. So we'll have a total of $525,000 to complete that training tower project. And then, as you know, the SAFER is a, is a multi-year grant for the phase-in of those two positions. So this is very exciting news. These grants, as I discussed with you back in March, these are nationwide competitive grants, and to receive one is exciting, to receive two in one grant cycle, we couldn't be more thrilled.
Board members have questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Berthold?
I'll just say that, you know, I know grant applications and grant writing is extremely difficult and extensive, and awesome job to be able to get those grants. I'm super happy for the town to be able to get that, and keep up the good work with the grant writing. It's, it's the only way really that towns can get what they need, you know, and keep it affordable to the residents, is to get the many grants that are out there. So I applaud you guys and every department in Auburn for continuing to go out and get these grants.
Thank you, Mr. Berthold.
Anybody else? Mrs. Goodrich?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just, too, want to congratulate you. You know, over the years, we've watched your department grow and evolve, and each time you show the courtesy and respect to this board by bringing in new members, promotions, et cetera, so we can see exactly what's going on in your department. And you have built such an incredibly strong department, you as a leader, great management, whether it's your captains, your lieutenants. We have quite the amazing fire rescue department, and I truly believe it's under your leadership because they follow your lead, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodrich.
Anything else? Okay, hearing none. Chief Johnson and Captain Brigham, thank you for your hard work, and chief, of course, thank you for all that you do, and.
You're welcome. I do just want to, I just want to do, reiterate, Mr. Chairman, that this, like I stated in March, we have a very small window on these grants, from the time that they're, they're announced until the deadline. We really have 30 days to pull together, you know, two comprehensive packages. And the way we tackled this one, we sort of, we divided it up into thirds, and Captain Brigham did a lot of the data collection on that side, Deputy Johnson did a lot of the statistical analysis, and then I tackled the narratives, and we all kind of looked at each other's work. But over that period of about two and a half weeks, three weeks, we were really working on the application, we probably talked to each other more than we care to, by phone, on and off duty. But I can't say enough about the effort and the work that these two put in over that period of time. Like I said, to get, to get one is exciting, to get two, it's almost unheard of in the same grant cycle, so we couldn't do it without, without their efforts, and I just wanted to make sure that they publicly knew my thanks and gratitude for their efforts in this project.
Does anybody have any questions on the declaration of surplus equipment? Is there a motion to declare based on the correspondence received?
I'd like the motion to declare the two vehicles as discussed within the fire rescue department as surplus property for disposal purposes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it is a vote. Thank you, have a good evening.
Mr. Chairman, I just would ask, the SAFER grant, the board did vote to allow me to apply for and accept the funds for the SAFER. For the training tower, I cannot find a record where the board voted to accept the grant, so I would just ask if the board tonight could just, to solidify that, just take a vote to accept the fund, the AFG funds of $477,233 for the training tower.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the grant award for fire training structure.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is a vote.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
Yes. So, yes, we have town manager item 6D, which is Mrs. Coyle, and 6E, which is Mr. Coyle. Can I have a motion to move both articles, or both items up, so that we can let them go home?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is a vote. So, Mr. and Mrs. Coyle, if you want to come up, and you can.
I think, I could just explain this 6D, and if there are any questions, Darlene's here, but this is just an informational item for the board, to let you know that Amy Cantoyes, our animal control officer, had applied for and was awarded a scholarship to attend a National Animal Care and Control Association Training Conference, and she received this scholarship, and we're really proud of her, and I want to congratulate her for getting that. This is a great opportunity to attend this conference. She is just a sponge when it comes to absorbing information, she does a great job, this is a great opportunity for her, and I just want to publicly thank Darlene Coyle, her supervisor for supporting her, as well as all the members of her department, because, you know, Darlene understands and recognizes the importance of professional development and training, and encouraging Amy to go for this, and want to thank Darlene for doing that, and also congratulate Amy. So it's just informational.
All right. Mr. Coyle, I apologize, I would have had you.
So this next item is on here for the information of the board as well. The town administration has spent a lot of time, through Mr. Coyle and his team, reviewing and subsequently updating the cemetery courses and policies, which had not been done in a very long time. So I wanted the board to have the opportunity to ask any questions, but I thought if it was okay with the board, Mr. Coyle could just explain what those policies and procedures are in relation.
Mr. Coyle?
Thank you. There was an internal meeting last week with the cemetery staff, at their request, and there were a couple items that they wanted to talk about, which I think were important for us to address, and town manager asked, I bring those before you, just to kind of make you aware of these changes. So the first item was mainly the scheduling of internments on Saturdays and weekdays, and just, and this is consistent with a lot of other cemeteries, that they be scheduled to arrive by noon time on Saturday, or 2:00 during the weekday. And if they, if the interment goes beyond that, certainly we understand that, it's a very sensitive situation, but again, we're trying to encourage that they, they happen in the morning and arrive before noon, and there is a, a fee that will increase the cost of $100 per hour thereafter, and that's essentially to cover our overtime costs. Our cemetery staff or union employees, they receive a four-hour minimum, so if they're from 8:00 to 12:00, that's their four hours, and so if, if it goes beyond noon time, we have to cover their cost, and so this will, this will cover that additional cost of the two employees. So we're hoping that will, will help also to minimize the funerals going later. We had one, I think, a couple weeks ago, that went to 3:00 in the afternoon, I may have shown up later, but trying to avoid that from happening in any way that we can, but if it does, just want to have a mechanism in place. But if it does, just want to have a mechanism in place that we can capture our costs that are associated with that. So in addition to that, one of the things that we talked about, which doesn't happen too frequently, but a disinterments, so, you know, when we're requested to remove or disinter, you know, vault for cremation, that cost, that time can actually take almost double the cost as the actual interment. So we're trying to cover that cost. So what we put in this is that would be double the cost of an interment. And the same thing for a full body vault and casket. You can imagine the effort to disinter that. So again, that would be double the cost. And in the past, we did not have that in place. So whether the interment fee was, was the fee that was being charged for the disinterment. And obviously, that can take twice as long, and can be very, very cumbersome at times. So that was added to this as well, that, that fee would, the fee for disinterment would be twice the normal fee. And I think those were the main changes.
Mr. Berthew?
I'll say that you're spot on with that. The disinterments are very delicate, very, very much more delicate, because obviously, an interment is very delicate. But the disinterment is, is a lot harder. You know, you're not just opening the hole, you, you haven't to open the hole around where the existing vault is and pull it up. So you're definitely spot on with doubling that fee.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, this is for informational purposes. It is not anything the board has jurisdiction over. So I thank you for bringing that to our attention, and have a good night.
Thank you very much.
For the chair, if I can, I want to thank Bill and Kenny and their staff for looking at this, just to, again, try to be sensitive to the needs of the residents in the community that uses the cemetery, but recognizing that we do have to cover our costs, and trying to just always enhance the operations. And I should have said it before, we did a chance, and while the chief is here and his staff, also want to thank them for all the work they did on the grant. You guys did an awesome job. We're just so proud of all the departments here, as you can see, just the, the work that they do day in and day out, and just the success that we've all had with grants on behalf of the town has been great. So every department works hard on them. That was a huge win for the fire department, and all of us work really hard to have grants, so want to thank Bill and his team as well.
Thank you.
Have a good night. You too. Have a good night. Be safe, everybody.
Thank you.
Going back to our agenda item, Communications 4A. It is a FEMA notification. We had a letter in our packet. I don't know that we really need to discuss it. Board members have had a chance to review it unless somebody has a specific question.
For the chair, if I could just mention this, I wanted you to have it because it was addressed to the chairman and the board, but it is a meeting that Bill Coyle and/or Joanna Hanklin are planning on attending.
Okay. We've dispensed with 5C. I believe 5D, which is an appointment of a member of the news media that covers news and is a citizen of the town of Auburn to the Riley Outstanding Citizenship Award Committee. We have a memo from the town clerk. You do not have a name.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mrs. Goodrich.
There's only one that I am aware of, so I would make a motion that we appoint Mr. Jeff Labonte of Auburn Mastali as the representative.
Okay. Is there a discussion? Mr. Berthew?
Can you make a motion to appoint?
Yeah, as a, as the representative, the press representative. The Board of Selectmen appoints the representative from the press, and it has to be an Auburn resident, and I, it's my belief that we only have one current...
And this is for the citizenship award?
Yeah, they, they vote on the Riley Citizenship Award. They gather in October.
I will start attacking in-between members. It's through the chair, okay? Okay? Do you have anything further, Mr. Berthew?
Nope.
Okay. Only under discussion, one thing I do have, if people are interested in doing this, so if Mr. Labonte is interested, it would be nice if they, you know, send us an email and say, you know, I'd like to, I don't like to appoint somebody not knowing whether they really are interested or not. I know John Anderson did it for many years, and I had the same, and I believe I made a comment previous, that we should have a recommendation, or somebody should be giving us an indication that they are willing to serve. But I will support the motion, but I would just ask that, in future, that we consider not appointing somebody in a, in a blind way, but ask them to at least say, hey, you know, I'd be interested in doing that. So there's a, there's a motion, there's a second. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Berthew?
Point of clarification, I'm assuming that we're going to go out and ask Mr. Labonte, and he has the right to refuse. So, and, and so I guess the word "appoint" might need to be changed with the whole thing, but it's, it's the way it's all written, so, but I will continue to, I would support Jeff Labonte, Mr. Labonte, to do this.
As I say, I have no objection to him or any person. I just would ask that, I don't like to appoint somebody and then say, oh, are they interested? I mean, we should be asking them ahead of time, are they interested? You know, we shouldn't be appointing them and then having somebody potentially feel obligated to serve. But anyways, Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you. So, so it's, it's our role to appoint someone, that's why I recommended appointing Mr. Labonte. We don't know whether he'll accept or not, but we fulfilled our obligation to appoint someone from the media.
There is a motion, there's a second. Having exhausted discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it is a vote. All right, we have Drain Layer's licenses. G.C. Katie Builders is applying. We do have a packet, and we have a notice from the Board of Sewer Commissioners, or actually, Mr. Mitchell on their behalf, saying, letting us know that he and they are in support of the application. Does anybody have any concerns, comments? Seeing none, the only thing I would ask, this one, Jeff, it doesn't have, there's no way for us to know who's making the recommendation, and perhaps you and the sewer commissioners know, but it's signed by somebody. There's no heading or anything else on either for Mr. Katie. And again, you may know, you may know who these two people are, but there's no way for me to know. I'm not worried about it, because you both have the letters of recommendation.
Okay, yeah, I'm just trying to figure out which, okay.
So, I mean, I'm not, and I'm not, I just, going forward, if you could ask them? Nothing, no. It doesn't say who they're from, they just say that they, that they've done work in the past. One of them's from, this one is not, it must be the next one that had something, it was well over a year ago that the letter was written, but anyways. If you could just ask them to make sure that they identify who they are, again, I don't have an issue with it, because I know you guys vet them quite well, but just to be consistent with everybody else. Is there a motion to approve?
There's a motion to approve. License provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town, any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it is a vote. We have a second, Drain Layer's license for LEI Construct Corporation, I apologize. We likewise have a memo from Mr. Mitchell indicating that the Board of Sewer Commissioners have stated that they are in favor of it.
I'll make a motion to approve the license, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town, and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? I would just say on this one, Jeff, there are two letters, one from the city from May of 2018, and one from the town of Wilmington from December of 2017. So again, I know you guys vet them very closely, so I have no issue, but I would think they could give us something a little more current than that. Yeah, they have two that are very good, but two that are older, so just if you could help in any regard. Thank you. No further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it is a vote. Thank you. Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you for staying extra, extra, extra late. We have gift acceptances, both for fire rescue. One is for $100 from Deanna White to the fire department gift account. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept the gratitude.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, it is a vote. We have a gift from Simon Properties, Auburn Mall, in the amount of $1,053 to the fire department gift account.
Motion to accept the gratitude, and a letter from the chair to be sent to Simon Properties thanking them for their generosity.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, it is a vote. We have declarations, I don't think we have to say that. We have one remaining item under Town Manager Items. I know we received two emails about her nomination for the National 2019 Trailblazer Award from the League of Women in Government, Mrs. Jacobson.
Through the chair, thank you. One of the members had recommended that I put this on the agenda. I had emailed the board separately, but it was recommended that I put it on just to let the community know. But yeah, I, I'm honored and excited that I was nominated for this award. It is given by the League of Women in Government, and they were nominated from all over the country, international, and I was informed last week that I'm one of 10 finalists for this particular award. So I was excited and want to thank the board for all your support through the years, and this, it will be, the winner will be announced at the ICMA conference that's in October that I'm attending, and at that point, that's where the winner is announced. And it's, it's an incredible field of people from across the country, so I don't anticipate advancing any further, but I'm thrilled, first of all, to have been nominated, and second to make it to the 10 finalists, so, thank you.
Congratulations. It's, it's an honor to, I'm sure it is a stiff competition, so to even be one of 10 is a considerable accomplishment, so.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I don't know of other board members. Mrs. Goodrich?
Thank you. So, yes, I'm the one that encouraged the town manager to put this on, because this really is an impressive accomplishment, you know, to have national recognition. And I, over the years, have attended many MMA meetings. I've attended the MMA Annual Conference and Trade Show, belong to the Worcester County Selectmen's Association, and interact with many selectmen, town managers, city managers, as well as, you know, see the governor and lieutenant governor at the State House. And the governor and lieutenant governor both have appointed Mrs. Jacobson to some very significant commissions, and they recognize just what she has to offer. They value and respect her input, her ideas, and I am, I am very, very pleased to see her honored, and to be one of 10 in a national recognition is very impressive. So no matter what happens, congratulations, it's quite an accomplishment, and your peers recognize that, who supported you, nominated you, and continue to support you.
Thank you so much.
Anybody else? Seeing none, we will move on to minutes of August the 12th, 2019. Does anybody have any corrections, omissions, anything in the way of comment at all? Seeing none, the chair will accept them as submitted without delay. Do any board members have anything before we take a vote? Seeing none.
Take a motion to adjourn?
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is a vote. We are adjourned.